Hello everybody, how are you doing today? I'm gonna first, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. It is 4:07 PM. This public hearing is regarding N-Star Electric, DBA Ever Source Energy, request permission to locate underground cables, conduits, and manholes, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures in, under, along, and across following public way or ways of South Main Street, Free Town. It's approximately 3,285 feet. So, you have representative from N-Star here?
Good evening.
How are you?
Well, how are you? Thank you for having us this afternoon. Actually, the afternoon. Jessica Elder, Ever Souls. I have Teresa Frosinger and...
Mike Twain, I'm the manager of conduit and dig safety division.
Alright, so I guess start off, tell us a little bit about this project and you know, what's the importance of it while we're doing it?
It's a system reliability project. We have to petition the town back on 4/20 for Rich Hill Road, which is a very small portion of it. And this is also part of, South Main Street is also state, yeah, Mass State Highway. And that's already been approved, we had Mass DOT permit, we've already been approved for that. So, the 3,285 feet of conduit as well as the town, 10 manholes going in. And, yeah. Yep, I just lost my turn about. I will let them go more into detail, but the, from what I understand, we missed it the last time because, and there was some questions at...
Yeah, we had a conservative citizen here who mentioned, like, he's been around town for awhile, been involved in a lot of different, you know, these kind of utility projects. He mentioned there's just a lot going on underneath the roads there. And the detail, the plans we got, you know, here are very high level. So, have all those things kind of been taken into consideration? Like, one of our concerns is someday if we want to bring, you know, say sewer down Main Street and its own it, we don't want this to then get in the way of that potential project. So, we want to make sure that we're thinking long-term with this and... I mean, I wish he was here today because he could, he knows the details of it. Unfortunately, I...
He talked about some of the existing stuff that's underground and how close it already is to the top coat and that being an issue, the amount of space, resurfacing of the road. So, not just, you know, because of the, how much the road has traveled. For, by Free Town standards, this is one of our, if not our busiest road. So, that was also one of his concerns. And then, he thought that the, based on the size of the manholes, they seemed a bit excessive. So, he was, you know, curious as to what, why, why everything was so large scale that was going into the road in Free Town. And he was saying, you know, based on the projects that we've had or will have that were, we know of, nothing seems to need that kind of, hold that kind of power. So, that was one of his questions. And that's, there was a lot more and there was a lot more detailed than that, but that's kind of adjusted some of the stuff we did.
Yes, if I may, I'll speak to a couple other things. Obviously, you know, based on the engineering we have and the footprint, we believe that we will, we will be able to install the facilities as they are on the plans. Prior to going out and doing so, we, we, we will test pit everything ahead of time to make sure that we have the room, water facilities. We're not impacting water, we're not impacting sewer. The footprint that we have, I don't believe is gonna be, in any way, will impact any future spot for you to put any sewer in, based on where we're trying to put the, with the pipe and the manholes in. The manholes are a larger sized manhole and the reason being is, is because it's a, it's a 12 duct system. And in the event that we end up maximizing all those conduits down the road with cable, we need the room inside for the guys to wrap the cable and splice it safely. That's why they're larger sized manholes. We use it often up in the city of Austin. As far as day-to-day working and setting up with crews, I've been in this business for 39 years. We have a lot of very, very good contractors that work with us. And I am on them every single day about making sure that they set up safely, making sure that they're going by the traffic management plan, making sure that there's job briefings, making sure that there are police details there. They're working safely and at the end of the day, you know, traffic is able to move freely, paving is done, temporary paving, and the area is all cleaned up. You won't have any issues. I will be a direct point of contact for anybody if there are any issues. And I will drive down here myself and deal with anything that we need to deal with. We just finished a job down in, that was New Seabury. Similar concerns and Tim Riley and his company did the work and did a great job. Tim and his crews will be, will be doing the bulk of the work. So, I brought Tim along if you had any particular questions for him as to the sequencing of the work and how, how that may happen, he can answer the questions.
And then, I, you know, you said, oh, you're on the city of Austin, but we're not exactly the city of Austin, right? So, that, I guess when people hear that and think, well, we're a Free Town population under 10,000, you know, why do we need something so massive? I appreciate the fact that we're thinking for the future, not just the present. But, I also don't want us to hurt our future by having something so massive go down the center of the road that then we can't do, to Trevor's point, the, the subway or whatever, the sewer or whatever else it is.
Yeah, and I may say this, if we get to a point where we're given approval to do the work and we go out there and we find that we cannot put the footprint that we want, we would then go back to engineering. We may minimize the pipes. So, if we said initially we may put 12 in, if we're causing a problem anywhere, we will minimize the size of the pipes. And if that happens, we will minimize the size of the manholes as well. So, it may adjust down, it will not adjust up.
And once the project's done, I know this, the citizen that he was referring to before, you know, made a statement about having the whole road resurface, not just where they trench because that never, you know, sits perfectly level with it being such a high-traveled road. So, will you go curb-to-curb with the resurfacing once complete with that?
Curb-to-curb, we normally do not do. We, we do not just do the footprint of the trench. We do one or two things. Typically, we'll go two to three feet beyond either side of the trench and do a grind and inlay. Or we may, depending on where we may do it, we may do center line to curb. But, I guess we could discuss that. I mean, to do curb-to-curb paving, it's a significant cost.
Now, is there a specific project that kind of kicked this off? Like, is there something, like, some kind of development or something that we're missing that, you know, will require, you know, this upgrade? Or is it just for the health of the system?
It's reliability.
Yeah, so I can provide some contracts around that. We do a handful of these projects every year and we identify areas that could tremendously benefit. It is a large-scale project, but it is because it has a benefit to all the residents in this area. So, that's where the reliability plays into the, the construction of this project. What these projects do is provide an alternative resource to switch people onto another resource to make sure that you never go out of power. So, if one, one way that power is, customers are being served, falters, we can do some switching and then keep them energized. So, that's really what the, what drives these projects. And that's why, you know, you have all of us here to answer all your questions. It's a very important project for the company and, and that's what's a big area of residence here.
So, engineering, prior to that, to Terry's point, they'll take a look at a particular area, the last 12 months of the area and say, hey, this area of Free Town to this area of New Seabury had X amount of outages in 12 months. So, we're given the directive to look at engineering and say, hey, engineering, how can we improve the service reliability for this area? We've had several outages. Do we add transformation? Do we go underground? Do we add more poles? That's looked at constantly for all of the areas that we outages on. And to Terry's point, this is one room that will give you better reliability down the road. And again, if I may, you know, we, I will, I will, I will take back and, and look and get some pricing for curb-to-curb paving and we can have an internal discussion. I can't guarantee anything, but I will say that I'm, I'm comfortable to say, whatever we'll do, we'll do, if we're on the right side of the shoulder, we'll do center line all the way to the end where we did any trenching.
Yeah, I think I might have a couple, like, specific questions that I'll, I'll be sending to you after this meeting. Does that work for everybody? I think we have your email addresses, so...
Absolutely.
Does the public, anyone from the crowd have any questions?
Actually, I have a couple of questions. Bob Joe's, from personally in the sun. So, I, I need two questions actually. The systems upgrade, the system, is that gonna be a trunk line? And you're gonna be able to break off and do fetal lines off of that? Or is it gonna be just a primary, like a Kendrick line, through line?
Could be both. So, the fact that we, we have the size of the manholes we have and the cable there, we have the ability to do both. But, the, the main driver, to Terry's point, is that in the event that we have outages in the neighborhood or in the areas, this will give us a lot more ability to, to do some switching around so that if a particular area may have had an outage before, we may not have had an opportunity to get them up and running quickly. This will give them an opportunity to do so. So, it minimizes outages and you're getting cable underground as opposed to overhead.
And are you saving, keeping the poles in this design as the pole, all the poles staying? Or are you gonna take the poles down and use this as a primary service?
This is an underground project. For the, for the town jurisdictional roadways, we're proposing 10 manholes and, without, to another reason, and the conflict.
But, so, so no poles are gonna come down? This is just an addition to what's already there?
This is an addition, that's great.
Okay, so this is an upgrading to total underground?
That's correct.
And last question is on the, on the, you actually, would be, through the chair of course, would be under the highway. Are you stepping down because that's a tight space, that's a fixed space? There's no diversion of, you know, extra room? Are you stepping down in size? Do you know what you're doing for a layout there? Is that a center layout? Because that's where we head into, to Chairman's position and Mr. Zaga's position. If we're trenching for water lines, we're trenching for sewer lines, that's, we're only linked to that. And that's, that's regulated by Mass Highway too.
No, understood. And again, I think, having done a lot of these projects, we'll, we'll test that ahead of time in those areas that are tight and we have the ability to make some adjustments deeply. So, we, we may go deeper and the layout of the cargo may be different as opposed to maybe six across, now we make it three across and then deeper. But, we're not, we, we won't impact so that other future sewer or water facilities will, will not be impacted.
Cause there, actually, there might be some existing conduits down there, right? So, that, we don't want to disrupt those because that, that's a part of our long-term.
But, for the board's future references, if we're looking at doing stuff in the future,
that is a space that, as you all know, it's, it's a confined space. It's not a space where Rest of South Main Street, you can get wide, you want the sidewalks if you have to. There, you really don't have much of a choice. That is a fixed space and it's, it's Mass Highway. That's one of the problems, problems with the sewer project when we're looking at sewer project was that specifically, that exit.
Makes sense, yeah.
Used to be exit nine, I don't know what it is.
I don't, I live off it, I don't know what it is.
Eleven, it's 11 now.
Yeah, it could be anything. Thank you.
Alright, anything else? Any questions from the board? George? Okay, well, thank you very much. Like I said, I'll follow up some questions and, yeah.
Great, appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you. I'll close the public hearing, 4:20 PM. So, to keep things moving along here, we're gonna go down to Agenda Item 8. So, this is the update on the Council on AGD project from Andy, Compass Architect Group. Compass Group Architects, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, for those who don't know me, I'm Andrew Giugiamo and this is Dan Hovall, Compass Group Architecture. We were hired by the town of Free Town to do a feasibility study on the Council on AGD building and to pursue three specific options and to look at an opinion of cost for each and give a recommendation. So, you're all familiar with the site, which is up there now. There's two buildings on the site, the COA and the coveted barbecue area. I'm gonna try to keep this to within 15 minutes. So, I've already met with some of the groups and some of you have already seen this material. So, I'm gonna try to condense it just to, to summarize any important points. So, go ahead, Dan. So, the importance of this slide is that the, what kicks in some code compliance issues is the cost of the structure. Not the land and the structure, the structures themselves. From the tax records, they've assigned $227,500, you can see it in red, for the cost of the structures. So, that may include the barbecue area. However, for this, I'll use that whole number just for the building. That's better for the project. Go ahead, Dan. So, the first thing we did is, we went and we measured the existing conditions, learned everything we needed to know about the building. And this is showing the lower level floor plan. As you're all familiar with, there's a lower and upper level. Each is accessible from grade because the grade slopes up. And the gross square footage with the new freezer, cooler is 2,084 gross, no, sorry, 2,196 gross square feet. Go ahead, Dan. This is the upper level, which is 1,924 gross square feet, bringing us a total of 4,120 gross square feet as the building sits there. This is, and just as a note, the building was made out of four modular units, which gives a challenging common grid layout, a column grid layout in the basement. And seems to get in the way of when you're trying to have any kind of meeting or, or setup or function. So, but, we'll try to work with that structure as we go. These are just the existing elevations. That will show you how it's two levels from one side and one level from the other. So, there. And those are the size elevations. On the southeast, you can see the new freezer cooler on the side there. So, then what we did is, is we met with the COA and talked about their program and what they do there. And we summarized it here. And you can see that the first column, if we go down to that line, the total gross existing area, that's that 4,120 square feet we talked about. Then we pursued two schemes, a larger one and a bigger one, which we came out 20 feet from the front of the building. And we looked at two ways to add on to this building. After talking with the COA, listening to their programs and some of the problems and challenges they face with the building, we came up with a recommended program in that second column of 600, 7, 6,709 square feet. That's what we recommend, based on speaking to the COA and how they operate. Then we did another scheme where we knocked 700 square feet off of that for a smaller scheme, which we'll see. Go ahead, Dan. Then we, we did a code compliance of the existing building because we want to make sure if we're to do a substantial project that we clean up any code issues at the same time. Or, we, what we'd be forced to clean up by hitting certain thresholds. So, things that we looked at is, you know, the size of the building for how it's built, the fire, the fire resistance ratings, the fire protection, means of egress, the number of plumbing fixtures within the building versus its use, accessibility, the handicap side of it, and the HVAC. And this summarized, this summarizes it right here. If you're looking at second column, as far as the size of the building and the materials used, it's, it's fine with current code. It's, it's not fine as far as a rated resistance go. The use group by code upstairs is Business B, downstairs is Assembly A3, which requires a two-hour separation if the building's not sprinkled. So, that would be rating the stairwell and the ceiling between the two. Existing fire protection, yes, it's in compliance because of the size of the building, which is 7,500 square feet gross. We're only at 4,120. And you'll see as we go on, even with the additions we're proposing, we're still under the 7,500. So, we're not facing fire sprinklers. Means of egress, yes, it does comply. Plumbing fixtures, it doesn't, for the simple reason that it doesn't have any service sink on each floor and drinking fountain, which it has to have by code. Existing accessibility, no. It has some accessibility issues that would need to be addressed. And the existing HVAC is not in compliance either, especially with air changes per hour. And of course, there's some control issues with the way it is. Go ahead, Dan. Now, granted, the building as it sits without doing a project is fine. Nothing pushes you in to code compliance. It's when you hit certain thresholds because you're proposing a new project. So, we can skip through these, these just get into more detail about what I talked about. So, go ahead, Dan. This is the same thing, go ahead, Dan. Go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead. This is the plumbing fixture count, shows that we're in compliance. The Business B by code is 19 occupants upstairs. That just goes by the size of the building. And downstairs, the Assembly A3 is 79 occupants. So, by code, we're okay as far as the plumbing fixture count goes. But again, the service sinks and the drinking fountain. Go ahead, Dan. Accessibility, this is one that we need to talk about because it's important. According to the 521 CMR, the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, if you do a project on a building like this and if the, if it's, if it exceeds 30% of the value of the structure, not the land and the structure, the whole building has to be, come up to compliance. So, if we take our, that, the value of the existing building, if we take it from the tax documents, which is used many times when we're doing projects like this, there are other methods where you could get that value up because obviously you couldn't replace that building for 227,000. But, to use that number, we don't, we can only spend $68,250 before we need to bring it in full compliance with accessibility issues. This is only for accessibility issues, none of the other ones. So, as you can see, as we go on, these two projects would mandate that we bring the building up to accessibility. And one of those issues is an elevator. Now, I, I know that the, I know it's accessible from both levels, but the code 521 specifically says, if a building is accessible from two levels and they're not distinct uses and if they're connected with a stairway, you need an elevator. And that's period. They don't care about the size, they don't care what old the building is, they don't care anything. You can go for a variance, which, you know, they do look at it, which, which you could possibly get, but you, you would need a variance. So, let's look at the next slide. So, this was Scheme 1, the one we developed first. So, Scheme 1, what we did is, we came up with a dimension of 20 feet to come out from the building as a starting point. That worked well with the site and without losing, I think, we only lost a few parking spaces. So, we came out 20 feet and we added across the whole front of the building. And on the left side of the plant, in that 21 foot by 20 space, we would look at this for a gathering or a function room that would be adjacent and closer to the kitchen, a new vestibule. And then, when you go into the lobby that's there now, the existing vestibule, that would, would be where we're showing the elevator. These are just very conceptual plans. These are not highly developed plans. These are just concepts relating to what we just talked about. And then, on the other side, on the right side, this could be meeting space or it could be used as food storage and part of the food pantry program. So, these, this 20 by 70 foot addition would add 1,222 square feet, bringing the first level up to 3,418 square feet. Go ahead, Dan. On the second level, the area of the light blue is how we would add it up on the second level. One thing we identified in the program is that we needed an enlarged activity room. So, that some of the programs that they'd like to have there wouldn't be a big enough space to, to hold them. So, we enlarged the recreation room, which would form a very lot, oh, a larger area to have those functions where you need more space. And the concept of possibly separating it with a folding partition to make two rooms out of the one larger. The area shaded in that peach color, that would be areas that would get renovated at, at the time. So, one of the areas we identified that was a problem was there was no reception or waiting area. If you were to come in and you were waiting to maybe go see a tax person, the foot doctor, whatever. So, top left corner of the plan, we changed the office setup so that it make a waiting area. We pushed the office to the front of the existing building. And that office would have an interior window so it could service the people in the waiting area. We also have a computer commons room up here that we think would be appropriate to a COA building that really doesn't exist now. The room in the center there would be a, a meeting or a break room. And the rooms on the back, they're not shaded, those are what's already there. A break room, kitchen, female and male toilet room and an office. Those would remain. Go ahead, Dan. An elevation, this is an elevation study to show what that would look like. The idea would be to add two gables out to the front and then connect them with a piece in the middle. And the entry would stay where it is now. Go ahead, Dan. This is a smaller scheme where we only add to one side. Problem with it is it goes over the threshold, the accessibility threshold. So, you'd still need the elevator and the machine room. We chose, after meeting and talking with some people, we chose to keep it on the right-hand side because what it did with the floor plan on both upstairs and downstairs. And in this scheme, if you could, I think it'd be nice to keep the natural light into that kitchen area where if, if we did add it across, it would, it would eliminate that window. So, this, that scheme there, this is the second floor of just adding to one side. So, this would bring the total of the second floor up to 2,981 square feet. You can see that, the color coded. So, the new addition area is 1,141. The renovated area is 1,130 square feet. The total work area is 300, 3,035. Now, what we tried to do is, we tried to look at everything and what would be the best value when you get into a project like this. So, for instance, these three areas, the shaded blue, the shaded peach, and the white, the unshaded, they would, they all need some level of upgrade. But, of course, the cost will vary. Even the area that's not shaded, in a project like this, you'd probably want to paint the walls, maybe redo some of the flooring. So, that, breaking it up into these different levels of square footage gives us the ability to look at those areas separately, cost-wise. Go ahead, Dan. That's the elevation of Scheme 2. That would show adding just to one side and we, we married the elevator to the other side and we only added one gable over on the right. Go ahead, Dan. So, the feasibility study tasked us with three items. Item number one was to look into upgrades to the existing COA, looking, look into a new COA on a new site and look into a COA combination library project. So, we did a study here and we, this takes that 7,000 square feet that we talked about when we did the program analysis, came out to 6,700 some square feet and change. And this drawing simply shows a red rectangle in scale. You can see the police, you can see the police station that was standing there now being built. Kind of gives you an idea of the size of this and where it would be. So, would be located there, that's about the scale of the size of the building. And at today's public construction rates of $550 a square foot, that, that total project cost would be $3,850,000 for that new building. Also, with the public process, would, would be years down the road before it was completed. Go ahead, Dan. Option 3 is a combined COA library. So, what we did is, we studied the program of a library for a town of our size, what the size of that building would be and, you know, using a program system from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. The library would be about 17,000 square feet with the new standards. If you add that to the seven, we're looking at a, a building that would cost about $12 million for the both combined. And if you're looking to get into the library grant program, which pays for half of the library cost, it would be years and years down the road. So, I, we don't see this as, we wouldn't recommend this as a viable option as that, there's some needs that to be addressed right now. Go ahead, Dan. So, here's a summary. What this, this summary relates to the three items we're tasked with with the feasibility study. So, one is the renovation of the new existing senior center. So, Scheme 1, let's look at Scheme 1. We got into more detail here. And some of these costs went up by the fact that since our last meetings, we went in and looked at that space and we broke it out that wouldn't have to be touched if you put an addition and renovated, but you'd probably want to do something to on this project. But, it's broken out, you wouldn't... But you'd probably want to do something to on, on this project, but it's broken out, you wouldn't have to. So scheme one, uh, the square footage of, of scheme one in the work area, uh, is two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four square feet. So the estimated price of that is one million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand. And then the three thousand square foot for renovated areas is, uh, three hundred thousand square foot for a thousand, two hundred and four square, square feet of renovated areas is another three hundred sixty-one. Three hundred sixty-one thousand, two hundred dollars and the other general areas, if you wanted to change flooring, um, upgrade ceilings. Is another hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two fifty. That would bring scheme one, the larger addition up to one million, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars, twenty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty total project cost. Scheme two, I won't go through all the numbers, but scheme two was one million, six hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred. These are the schemes bringing the building up to full compliance, adding the elevator and whatnot. So then, uh, at the best value for the town's money and going forward, we believe is scheme one. Go ahead, Dan. So a quick summary, required code upgrades for the existing COA building. The new work being done in the entire existing building needs to be brought up into full compliance with five twenty-one CMR. The Massachusetts Architectural Access Board regulations. That's for these two schemes. Again, if you don't do anything, of course it doesn't, you don't have to go and do that. An additional handicap accessible toilet room would be required on the lower level. A new service sink and drinking fountain would be required on both levels. The reason that a new accessible handicap toilet room is required on the lower level is because one of the toilets don't meet the handicap size as it stands right now. The other three do, the two on the upper level and the one downstairs. A new to, a new two-stop elevator would be required for both schemes. The upgraded building will not require fire sprinklers since it is less than seven thousand, five hundred and square feet in both schemes. Uh, this gets to the different, uh, occupancy classifications per code. Uh, a two hour fire separation is required between the lower A-three assembly use group and the upper B-business use group. Uh, new accessible entrance ramps would be required on both upper level entries. So the handicap ramps that are there are not in full compliance and we put, what we, one would have to be put on both doors on the upper level to get in. Of course, the lower level is fine as, as it goes in. Uh, the existing stairway needs some upgrades. The HVA system would, would, uh, needed to be upgraded for the entire building to meet air change requirements. And of course it gets better control at the same time. Uh, and, um, an upgraded fire alarm system is highly recommended by us. But not necessarily, uh, uh, required by code. But you'd certainly want to do it if you did do this project. Uh, and this, this analysis assumes that the existing sewage disposal system does not need to be upgraded. Couldn't find much information on that, but I also couldn't find any information that it was failing or there were any trouble. Go ahead, Dan. So, uh, I did this, um, I did this because of what I heard and what I knows, know has gone on. Uh, this is what I call the minimum expansion to the COA building, but there's a few caveats with this one. Uh, number one, uh, this would be a twenty by twenty-eight addition to both levels for a total of one thousand, one hundred and twenty square feet. Okay? And that would form one new room, which could be used virtually for anything. We're recommending it again on the right side. Granted, we do not recommend this option, but I wanted to look at it because there's some money available and I, I, I think that it, it, it behooves us all for us to look at it. Number two, this option would require a variance from the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board pursuant to five twenty-one. So right off the bat, you have to get a variance to do this to a public building. Um, and this, this would be, um, assuming that you're only dealing with the addition. And you're not upgrading any of the rest of the building. So, uh, that would add one thousand, one hundred and twenty square feet. And for a project this size, the square footage goes way up because a lot of things don't change like mobilization, um, other costs. There's a lot of fixed costs that don't change. So, uh, this would ha- carry a high project, um, overall cost of seven, six hundred dollars a square foot. And, uh, our opinion of cost for this would be six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And this would be by variance only. You couldn't do this as a matter of right. So, uh, that's about it. Um, if there's any questions, I'll gladly answer them, but that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
That's a fifteen-minute version.
Pretty good, thank you.
I think, I would open probably right now.
Any questions?
Yep.
One question, Andy, what's the likelihood of getting that variance in five twenty-one elevator variance?
I don't. You know, I've had some luck with variances, but here we got a COA building. Um, it, 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 it fits a definition perfectly that they are the same uses connected by a stair. So I think forc- forcing people out into incline of weather maybe and having to go around or. Uh, I, I wouldn't, uh, I wouldn't go to the bank with it and, uh, it would cost about three thousand to three hundred and fifty dollars to get this middle package together to make that variance. And that would be the first step that you would do. But, um, I don't, I don't think, uh, granting that accessibility val- variances to COA buildings is high on their list. But I've been surprised up there before.
Is that a hardship based variance or is that just they come and see if there's a, any more?
No, uh, I don't see that that you would have a hardship case here, just. The only thing you would say is that sometimes you look like, you look at a building this size and you look at the sheer scale of an elevator versus the overall building. And it just kind of looks out, you know, you're just like, wow, it, you know, it's, you know, too much for that building. You know, they put this addition on, served the town for twenty years. And, uh, that's, that's the kind of argument you would make that it's just too much cost power for a building this size. You have to go through all that.
I got a question, how, sorry. Uh, how long do you think the construction, with scheme one, how long do you think the, the total construction time would be?
So, uh, s- scheme one, construction time, don't forget this soft cost here, you, you know, you'd have to start off with a survey and. We, you know, we, we did, we did measure the existing and that's, that's a base that could be used, but construction itself.
Yes, I'm talking, I'm thinking about like, you know.
Once it started.
Displaced, I'm sure from, or won't be able to use the COA or at least parts of it during construction, so we got to figure out.
I would plan eight months to a year.
Okay.
And hopefully get it done in eight.
Yep.
Remember, pub- public projects take a little longer and a little harder to close out in the end.
It's just another thing we need to figure out, right?
Typically close out on a public project is like two months, no matter what.
Yep.
The size is.
Yep. Thank you.
Your, your recommendation is option one, correct?
It's just the best, if, if, if you can come up with more money, you're getting the best bang for your buck. It's, it's, it's taking care of all of the issues that I heard sent to me and it would serve the town well into the future.
In my opinion, the town should spend the money for option one and get this project done. So the seniors can have the, that's, there's no other way to put it, Mike. We just, we do something less than that, we just, somewhere along the line, we're gonna have to get it done again. So let's just do it. That's my opinion.
Yeah, Andy, can you put option one back up on the screen?
Yes.
Scheme one, right?
Scheme one. That's what, that's. That's the first level there. And then click to a second, Dan, please. And then what you get here is you get that nice enlarged recreation room, uh, computer commons room. Um, you know, a, a, a good way to handle reception waiting. Uh, and, and whoever would be in office two would be able to have communication with those people. And then, and then on the first level. You would get this nice gathering room that's adjacent to the, to the, um, kitchen, which, um, would be very functional and would make a gr- as the dimensions of a great meeting room. For small to moderate sized meetings.
What was the cost on this again?
One point nine.
Yeah, one point.
One point nine.
Yep. That's project cost. So, um, that's with the soft costs. You know, survey, design, that's, that's in there.
Total.
Now remember, this is opinion of cost, you'd wanna, you want, you'd want to use this for planning purposes. But if you were, you know, if this was to go to town vote or everything, you wouldn't want to take this a little further, just to get your numbers straight. But I think we're right in there.
Could you fill the option one picture of the finished product?
The elevation, sure.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead. So the, the concept of this is structurally, it's, it's, it's a, it's, I'm not gonna say it's a difficult problem, but what you're doing is. You're removing the outside wall. So, you know, uh, there's a lot of load on outside walls. You've got half of the roof load because it's roof trusses. And you've got a third of the floor loads coming to that outside wall. So, um, the idea here would be the two gables, I think visually it would be aesthetically pleasing. But it would also, uh, divide that up into three distinct structural base. So that we could spin beams in three ways and, and, you know, be very, and, you know, you wouldn't see any columns or anything between a new space. But it'd be a very efficient way to add structurally. I think aesthetically it would be nice to have those two gables. And then the center would be where you enter and you can see that the, the upper level comes out a little further. And the door would be undercover and we're showing a little, we arched that ceiling a little bit so that you'd be undercover before you went in. Um, so you can see that those gables, uh, would be higher than the gables of the existing building. So that's how you would, we would handle it from the side elevation.
Did you touch the column system in the primary building, the existing building now or did you leave it?
No, we left and worked with it. You almost, that would, there's not, no, that would get real expensive for no good reason. So what we did is we made sure that we had the larger spaces column flit-free in the new spaces we added.
That would be utilizing a lot of the existing building.
Yeah, the existing, uh, the only new, the new stuff is blue, George. And, and the renovated is the peach color. Everything else that, that, the white area is untouched except for, I would assume you'd want to paint the walls at the time or, you know. Swoosh up a ceiling, new lighting fixtures. That's why we carry fifty dollars a square foot in those areas to, to clean them up.
So all we need is an extra million and a half.
That's all you need and it's all yours.
We have a half a million over.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's solved, solved away somewhere, I'm sure.
So I tried to look at a scheme on what we could do with the half a million. And, um, I believe that, uh, for six hundred and something thousand dollars with the, uh, soft costs and everything. Don't forget, even if you took a small project on like that six hundred, in a public judge, you're gonna incur close to a hundred thousand dollars just in soft costs. With a public bid and all the documents you have to have to support it. So you can see that that gets to be a bad value, um, overall because your square foot costs go up, you know, the whole project costs.
I'll buy this one.
Paul, yeah.
On a project like this, would they be ready, let's say they want to present this to town, would you be ready for, say, a September town meeting?
Yeah, I can't see why not.
And what I'm willing to do as a resident of the town, um, I would like to take this one step further before it went to town. I would bring the drawings a little further, then send it out to an independent cost estimator. And have an independent cost estimator price it. To, to make sure that we're not just going on my opinion of cost before it went before the town.
So we couldn't blame you.
Why's that? So I'll still, I'll still get blamed, but hopefully, um, I could feel that I was right when I got blamed. Um, uh, but, um, uh, I would highly recommend that and, uh, I would just do it within this, within this existing study. If you wanted to take it to that next level.
Um, the consensus of the building committee was to go with, um, scheme number one. We thought it was the best option, um, overall for not only the COA, but for the town and the town's future. Um, also we had talked about at the time taking money out of stabilization to offset some of that cost. And, um, it depended on the timing of the project. Um, if it were summertime, um, you certainly could use a school, um, because there's no, no students in the school. So you certainly could use a wing of that school, um, probably the activities room or the gymnasium as well. Um, also there's the attic upstairs that has, um, accessibility, um, dependent on what was, the needs are, um, in this building, there is space.
Absolutely.
And just for the record, um, we did this feasibility study, but, uh, we could not, we cannot just automatically continue as a matter of right. As the design architect, this would have to go out.
It's a bid, right?
Yeah, an RFQ would have to be issued and if we were interested in it, we'd have to submit a, uh, proposal like any other firm if that was a chosen. So a lot of work would c- clearly end at the feasibility study. If it went any further, we'd be just like any other firm, um, submitting on it.
Action. Very good.
Thank you.
All right, so, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Should we figure out our next steps, but?
I think we have one more question in the back.
Yes.
I think, I'm glad that they go, but we had a meeting before and we talked about the scheme one and scheme two. Scheme one is fine, obviously. The six hundred thousand one was what we had asked for originally, wasn't even that big, but that's good. The thing that we talked to, Andy, when you and the build inspector met at the senior center was concern that, that we had or I have is. The space up in the second floor. The elevator on scheme one.
Dan, could you flip that? Yes. Yeah, go ahead, Bruce.
It's right there. Now, we had spoke, we had spoke about that area that we have up. If we, if we go, if we went to the six hundred thousand, I think you'd see that that whole se- second floor would come from where it is now. Out twenty feet and go straight across, yeah, just like, like you got there. And I, I didn't print that out, but I don't know what the.
No, that wasn't in the package. I, I, I thought about it and I said, you know what? I always, I had gone through this exercise, didn't put it in the package. And I said, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna present it. So, um, I'm gonna recirculate this.
Only because surfaces, surface area is what we need, you know, I mean, we need square footage. Uh, and as we spoke at that meeting, the, the second floor came out, went all the way over by the vestibule. That would give that whole top floor open space and then over into where the pool table is. So we, that we thought was more of a useful to our needs than putting any type of, even that, that, uh, private consult room that you got there. You know, I know it's probably already there now, maybe basically.
Yes.
I think the wall's there.
Yes.
But even if, uh, I guess that could stay there, but.
It got a little bigger.
Yeah. The elevator is, is, I think is a concern if you could move it on the other side with that scheme, if that's scheme one is the way that, that, that's gonna be proposed. Uh, if there's another way, you put the elevator on the other side and open that up all the way across. I guess take that, take that wall out, um, next to the elevator and take, move the elevator like you have on, on scheme two. Basically, scheme two would take, take that, that wall right there, um, down right there, right in that area. That, uh, the new office on the second floor, so that we have that area open square footage.
Yeah, so Bruce, uh, these are all good ideas. So, um, a feasibility study takes it to a certain level so we can get opinion of cost. Of course, if the project moved forward, I don't know what the process would be for getting an official go-ahead for the project to move forward. But the design architect would meet with all you people. Um, uh, well, I know if, if it was us, we certainly would. We'd meet with all you people and we would develop this further. If, if this went forward, it, this wouldn't go forward as, all right, scheme one, let's do some working drawings and get out the bid. You'd go through, you know, design development, schematic development and, and it certainly could end up differently. We just had to get it to a point where we could look at all the options.
Well, like I said, at the meeting that we had, we kind of discussed going all the way across and I can see it here except for maybe it's key in the, the last one here.
Yes, and, and, uh, uh, if this does go forward in any form, that should be part of the schematic design. They should present you with quite a few options.
Because in, in the summertime, we have plenty of square footage because we got the, got the pavilion out there that we utilized.
Yep.
In the winter time, that's where we need to have more square footage in the inside, which is more valuable to us for the seniors to do activities and put the damage in thousands of square meters. So that, that is something that we want to look at, you know, like you said, if it ever comes to fruition.
Yep. Okay, so, uh, hopefully this will help to get you to that next level and decide where you want to go with it.
All right, there, I mean, I don't know about you guys, I, I've liked scheme one, I think we have kind of consensus here.
Yep.
Figure out the exact next steps we need to take to, uh, you know, get this going, but.
Plan what we want to present at, uh, fall town meeting.
Yep.
Sounds like we needed another million dollars, that's all.
And just, um, let me know if you need anything for that meeting, if you decide to go forward. Thank you. Okay? Thank you.
Trevor. Uh, next that's all pretty much spelled out in math general law, so I can forward that to you, please.
Okay, all right, perfect, thank you.
So that, I may, uh, that, so if we're just gonna utilize that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that would be, that is available to us at this point.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm, I'm also thinking the cost, right, you know, the taxpayer, the mortgage, business-wise and, and residential. So, uh, we want to keep the cost down as much as we can, but as long as we get to five fifty and that's still available to us, doesn't look too bad, so.
Yeah. And hopefully the construction costs start to go down sooner than later, you know, but crazy right now. All right. So. Are we moving on now?
Yeah. Do you need to vote?
Do, do, is, do we have to vote on that, on just going forward with the scheme one?
I think you, I think you would have to vote to move forward with the project and go through Master General Law for the private manager and forward.
Okay, yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to, um, for us to go forward with scheme one and, uh, go for, you know, go through the Master General Law requirements to move this forward.
Uh, motion made.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll get that to you in a minute.
Appreciate it, thank you. Okay. So next, we, I'll go over to Chandler, we got an update on the highway barn roof?
Uh, what I have, I, I'm getting a material list, so I can send it to two other vendors.
Okay.
And once I have that, then we can, um, schedule to get it, get it done, so I'm, I'm assuming to get it done by the end of July.
Alright. Trying to remember. Cause this was the, I remember, this has, this has been going off for a little while now, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And we were, we were discussing whether we wanna insulate it? Is that possible? Or not, do you have a path forward, I guess, now?
Yeah, we're looking at, what we're looking at, I had a number of, um, uh, free roofing companies.
Yep.
Discuss that, going with a half inch or an inch.
Mm-hmm.
Board on top, it's an insulated board, but um, cost wise, tool code. You, you can instantly replace the insulation that's affected right now, that's inside, uh, for a lot, a lot less than going with a six inch insulation board. Because the other thing, you, you can't just do six inch insulation board and then stop it and not put anything over the area that, that's not even needed anyways. Um, you'd have to continue it all the way through front and back. Um, right now, we're, we're gonna take care of that, the front side, street side, um, for that, and I can keep that under, um, the cumin and and so on, so, um, the way it could be set up. By us purchasing, purchasing the materials and then paying, um, a contractor to come in. And I, I already have one guy that can do it for under ten thousand.
Okay.
So. Any other questions from the board on this?
No.
So when, so just, again, you think like, this will be done towards the end of July, is that what you said?
Yeah, that's what I'm choo-, I'm actually gonna start, um, probably by the end of this week. Uh, get that material list, and then I can send it to a couple of the lumberyards that we deal with as well, and then get prices from them. Um, and then, you know, just keep rolling forward. I've already had contact with a company, uh, two of them that, you know, put in for, um, price to do it. And one is just over the ten thousand with the labor, the other one is under. So it kinda. Us buying the material, which is sound practice, I, I have talked to Kim.
Yeah.
And she's talked to the attorney general, and it is sound practice to do it that way as well, so.
Perfect.
Um, the only thing is that with, which I was unaware of, the, buying the material is because it's over the three thousand. I have to get a number, you know, at least three, three bids on that to continue.
So that kind of slowed me down. The other issue that slowed me down was, um,
there was money that I had that I had to kind of concentrate on fixing up other smaller things around town.
Yeah.
Um, so I kinda put that to the back burner this last month.
Okay.
Just to get rid of that before we actually lost money, so.
Yeah.
I thought that, to me, was a little bit important.
I understand. Any questions?
No.
Alright.
We've got quite a good.
Yeah, alright, thank you, Jeff, appreciate it. Alright, so I think that's a little of worries, just get a quick update from the public nurse, if you don't mind?
Thank you. So just a quick update as far as COVID cases, uh, since the beginning, were nine hundred and ninety-seven. Uh, as far as cases in the last two weeks, um, we have two cases currently, there are no active cases, those are cases who have been closed. Uh, positivity rate is the one point two three percent. So for the month of June, I spoke at the last meeting, we had eight cases, um, for the month of July, we have the two cases. And with those two cases, one case was between a thirty and forty-nine year old, and one case was between fifteen and sixty-four. They also, through the state, they run, you can run reports, so I did run a report for Freetown, looking at if there was any variants. So in the month of June of those eight cases, four of them were, um, the Delta variant. So, um, we were seeing that, so they do run that. It's, it's not run on all specimens, they kind of, you can choose which ones they're gonna send for that, so four of those either were, um, that Delta variant.
That's a little scary.
Do we know, uh, what the percentage of vaccinated, uh?
So I wasn't, um, I didn't get to run that for this, um, for this meeting, but I can do that and get that to you. Just see if the numbers. I know, obviously, the state is really pushing, um, as far as vaccinations. I still do have the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, I know there keeps coming out different, um, concerns and things like that. Um, I was able to, someone was vaccinated today, so we are, um, still continuing to vaccinate, um, as, you know, as requested. The other update I have as far as, um, mosquito testing, obviously, the state's been, they started on June fourteenth. So far, through the whole state, there's only been, um, they've had their first West Nile positive mosquito sample, which was detected on July first. And that was, um, not in this, that was in, it was Medfield, so Middlesex County. And we get weekly reports, um, in Briscoe County, and as of, uh, the report just came out yesterday, and there was no positive mosquitoes at this last week. So obviously, currently, Freetown is low risk for triple A and S, but obviously, everyone still needs to make sure that they're protecting themselves with repellents. Avoiding those, um, peak mosquito times, and obviously, they're still doing all the spraying, and that can be requested, um, and they can come out and do that in Tuesdays, uh, Tuesdays is Freetown Day.
Okay.
The other, um, update, tick foreign disease, um, here in Freetown, we are, because we have a lot of woods, a lot of deer, we are at high risk for tick foreign disease. So the most common ones that we have, um, babesiosis. Currently in this month, we've had three cases, um, one in the previous month, and then we've had six cases, um, to date. Anaphysmosis is another one, we've had one this month here, two last month, and then five to date. And then with Lyme disease, um, we've had one currently this month, nine last month, and twenty so far year to date.
Is that a lot? Kind of a lot.
It's, um, so last year, so with all of them, they come out to about thirty-two for, um, year to date, last year we're at fifty-two, so um, you know, it's still, it's the time of year, so yeah, it's still a lot.
But you only get it for a couple, you, you know, I'm sure that it spikes this time of year, obviously, right?
Right, it does spike from spring to fall, and then, you know, usually the wind kind of push people on out as much. Ticks are year-round.
Yeah.
Those mosquitoes are, you know, seasonal. Um, ticks is a year-round thing, but it peaks during this, um, you know, spring and summer, ticks have like a cycle. The other, I know Judge, um, usually asks as far as numbers, as far as hospitalization and deaths for COVID, I meant to mention that before.
Mm-hmm.
So for two thousand twenty-one, um, we've had, um, from January to June, fourteen that have been hospitalized, and there's been two deaths for twenty twenty-one. The nurse clinic hours, um, I started those today, so I'm holding those the second Tuesday of the month over at the COA. Um, from ten to eleven in the morning, I also stayed, um, after hours, and they had a cookout, so I kinda went around and, um, touched base with a lot of the residents. Um, it's kind of nice to see everybody kind of back up there again.
Yeah.
Uh, and kind of just, uh, you know, let them aware that I'll be coming back during the clinic hours, so if they have questions, they can try to reach out to Barbara, and then Barbara can, um, reach out to me. Another kind of update, um, tobacco, um, we have a gentleman, Joseph Cabalo, who does, who's paid through a grant um, through the state, who does our inspections and compliance checks. So now with COVID and everything, um, he is gonna be going out back out there and doing those inspection and compliance checks. So there is also something, um, and I'll touch base with the DL. There is a new, there was new law that had gone into effect in two thousand nineteen, kind of when COVID was coming around, um, and they're starting to look at some of those, um, and that's part of the inspection, so I'll touch base with DL, and I was sent, the state sent out a letter, um, and I'll send it over to you guys, just, um, just kind of letting businesses know they're required to have certain paperwork, um, in their business, and it's what the state's looking at, and there's a a schedule, a fee schedule as far as fines, which is like one thousand, two thousand, five thousand dollars.
Alright.
So I can, I'll touch base with him, um, he wasn't in the office when I was in there this morning, so I can kind of get that and, get that information to you guys.
Thank you.
Alright.
I think that's it.
Alright, appreciate your time, thank you as always for any information. Okay.
Moving on.
So now, I will move on to. I guess I'll go back up to six, and then, okay, so, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from six twenty-two twenty twenty-one and six, seven to twenty twenty-one.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, so make a motion to approve the weekly warrants, uh, zero five four, zero five eight, related to six thirty twenty twenty-one.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, checking now. Alright, uh, so this is, um, the Bitumis concrete. Um, contract with Town of Freetown and TL Edwards, Inc. This is from seven one twenty twenty-one to six thirty twenty twenty-two. I think we've already discussed this before.
Yeah, it's one of the ones that you guys voted on, this is just the actual formal agreement.
Okay, so nothing, uh, crazy, so I'll entertain, entertain a motion to, um, approve this contract?
Motion made.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. So this is discussion on, uh, the potential light pollution bylaw, where this was, uh, the former town administrator kind of just took this by the reins and, uh, I think we want to discuss this with some other committees and boards.
Yes.
So, who we don't have with us today, so I think we'll table this. Until, uh, you know, invite, I don't know, I guess the planning board, conservation commission, somebody, maybe all the above, to talk about having a really thought-out light pollution bylaw.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So I think no vote required there, I don't think. Food pantry insurance, so, um.
Been resolved.
It has been resolved?
Yeah, I spoke to, uh, you have documentation?
He did send some documentation of his, um, binder for insurance, but it's not the certificate of liability that we need, so I've spoken back and forth with Craig Cabral today.
Okay.
He just emailed the insurance company again this afternoon with exactly what we need, so they should be sending that over tomorrow.
Oh, awesome.
So it should be taken care of.
Thank you, that's good news. Okay, so next, we have a transfer request, um.
We need to wait on the transfer request till the thing comes, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so numbers thirteen through eighteen.
Gotcha. So then. Should we go through and, uh?
Can go to the personnel board?
Yes, we can knock that out.
Alright.
Okay.
Let's do it.
Okay, so write it and, uh, vote on each item, uh, go down the list, read it.
Yep.
If you have objection or discussion on any item, just say hold. Okay?
Absolutely.
Alright, um, acknowledge the resignation of Peter Jakowski as town administrator, effective six twenty-eight twenty twenty-one. Acknowledge the resignation of Walter Sawicki as constable, effective six thirty twenty twenty-one. Acknowledge the resignation of Tim Dacey as boat ramp beach attendant, effective seven seven twenty twenty-one. Appoint Tim Dacey as seasonal beach attendant, effective seven seven twenty twenty-one, until nine thirty twenty-one. Rescind the appointment of Maurice De Moranville as mott superintendent, effective, uh, I'll hold on that. What is that? I have no idea what a mott.
It's a, um, he's the tree warden, but it's another title that goes with it as well, that he's in charge of the mott.
I thought it was like a misprint verse.
No, it's true, I double-checked, um, but it's something he's been appointed to every year, so it was one of the, um, yearly appointments that he did, but the ending date had to be twenty twenty-four, so this, you're just rescinding the old one and appointing him with the effective date of, of April, cause that renews in April.
It's my favorite.
I'm not sure what a mott superintendent does.
My favorite title I've ever heard.
Yeah.
Well, the next one is, uh, again, appoint Maurice De Moranville as mott superintendent, effective seven one twenty-one, to expire four one twenty twenty-four. Appoint Michael McHugh to commuter rail task force, delegate, effective seven thirteen twenty-one, to six thirty twenty-two. Appoint, and the next one, uh, appoint Michael McHugh to Freetown Vocational Education Exploration Committee, effective seven thirteen twenty twenty-one, to six thirty twenty twenty-two. Next one, appoint Mike McHugh, Mark Logan, and Christopher Kelly, Senior, as agents to locate and mark town bo- boundaries on behalf of Board of Selectmen, effective seven thirteen twenty-one, to six thirty twenty-two. Discuss and appoint Mike McHugh to SRPPDD, SERPED, uh, Joint Transportation Planning Group, effective seven thirteen twenty twenty-one, to expire six thirty twenty twenty-two. Appoint Cheryl Estralla to Freetown Vocational Education Exploratory Committee, effective seven thirteen twenty-one, and expires six thirty twenty-two. Appoint Jared Zager to Freetown Vocational Education and Exploratory Committee, effective seven thirteen twenty-one, to six thirty twenty-two.
So I think we'll have to hold on thirty-two at least, because we need to discuss who.
Okay, so we'll hold thirty-two. Appoint Robert L. Gregory and Sharon J. Rosen to the Scholarship Committee, effective seven one twenty twenty-one, to expire six thirty twenty twenty-four. Approve the appointment of Kim Johnson as recording clerk for the Economic Development Committee, Building Committee, and Finance Committee from seven thirteen twenty twenty-one to six thirty twenty twenty-two.
May I put a hold on that?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, discussion and vote to approve collective bargaining, uh, MOU between Freetown Full-Time Firefighters Association and the Town of Freetown, effective seven one twenty-one through six thirty twenty-four. Discussion on requiring drug and or alcohol testing. I'll put a hold on that.
Yeah.
Okay, so entertain a motion to accept all the ones that we didn't put on hold.
Uh, motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, so now we will go back to discussion of vote the appointment of a selectman to follow positions, so your Economic Development Committee, Health Insurance Advisory Committee, um, Priority Development, and Sexual Harassment Officer.
Okay.
Any takers? So, to influence, a board of selectmen member has to have.
Alright.
Has to be on one of these, right, I'm assuming?
That's what I was told, yeah.
We can split the welt here and have one volunteer to be a sexual harasser, a harassment officer.
Does this require some sort of, uh, of, of special training?
I don't know, I'll have to ask you when.
Not that I'm aware of.
Alright.
Alright, who wants to be the Economic Development Committee member, anybody?
I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll take, I'll take it.
And then I'll do the Health Insurance Advisory Committee, I guess.
Okay. Uh, alright, I'll take Priority Development, wh- whatever that is, what is that, anybody know?
Well, I want to find out, unless it'd be appointed to it.
There you go, learning on the job.
Okay, now, uh, we're going to.
So yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint myself as the Economic Development Committee, um, and the Sexual Harassment Officer.
Hello.
Okay.
Motion made.
Yeah.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Alright, now, I guess, uh, so I'll, I'll just take it, I'll just bang this out, so entertain a motion to, um, appoint Jared Zager to be the.
Trevor, hang on, this is still on the personnel.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, okay, alright. Uh, okay, we, we did the economic development?
Yep, and the sexual harassment.
The sexual harassment, so we'll need Health Insurance Advisory Committee?
That's me, yep.
You're gonna take that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take Priority Development.
Alright.
Okay, alright, so we have, you have all that, man?
Lola's got it, I've got that too.
Okay, alright, so entertain a motion to accept, uh, these appointments?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, we did, uh, we did, okay, hold on.
Thirty-four. So the reason I suggested a hold on thirty-four was there is appropriation, there are monies set aside for the recording clerk's salary for the Finance Committee and the Economic Development Committee, however, not for the Building Committee. At one point it came out of the town administration budget, there's nothing currently there for it, but I did talk to Kim Fales and she said that we could take some excess in the town administrative salary line now and move that money over into this. So if you wanted to do that, to cover that, you'd have to put a vote in on that as well.
What would the vote be exactly?
Well, you would be appointing Kim to be a recording clerk for all three of these committees.
Okay.
And then you would have to do a motion to, um, move monies from the town administrator.
Okay, so that's two different motions, right?
Yeah, that you would approve that move and then she can help me navigate how we do that.
Alright, so first I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Kim Johnson as recording clerk for the Economic Development Committee, Building Committee, Finance Committee, effective seven thirteen, twenty twenty-one, to six thirty, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh. Now, we need another motion?
A motion that you're just approving that we can utilize those funds, I may have to do a transfer request, I'll have to talk to Kim on how exactly we do it.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so that, we can't do that today.
But that you just approve it. We can wait till next time.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, uh.
Next, right, thirty-six.
The, uh, the discussion on requiring drug or alcohol testing. Uh, we, we don't have policies for that now?
Apparently not, probably not. In the CBAs, they do say that you can't do drugs, that kind of a thing.
It says we can't?
Cannot, sorry.
Really?
I did, I believe I.
I think we can do drugs, George, they can, elected officials.
Okay, it's frowned upon. Um, we did get an email, which I think I shared with you all, from attorney, um, Joe Fair. In regards to that if they're working for us and they have a C D L license, it's actually required by the law to be doing, um, random drug testing, so.
Yeah, that's, that's where I see it making sense, is for operating heavy machinery.
Right. I spoke with Chuck Makeomer this morning and he said all of the existing employees all have C D Ls, so they should all be being random. He did give me, custom drug testing is who they used before, and they came in on site randomly and just did it, so we would have to, um, figure out, I guess, where the monies is coming from, whose budget that comes from and all that to cover that, and then engage with that company. The pending question is that we have some new hires that we're making for the highway department, and are we going to require pre-employment drug testing?
Yeah.
Well, to Joe Fair, we can, because they're not members of the, um, collective bargaining agreements at this point. So we do have someone who's supposed to start on seven twenty-six, but we can tell them that we need to do this, we just have to figure out, you know, when and where, and are we gonna use this company to do that?
Can we put this off then until the next meeting?
Yeah, I just like, what I like to say is, I fundamentally have an issue with like, with marijuana testing or firing somebody for making that fireable offense from marijuana, just because it's state to legal drug.
Right.
Or state by a regulationally, right, and, you know, it's, it just happens to last in your system long to, long, a lo- longer than it's actually has any kind of psycho, you know, effect on you. So if like, it's hypothetically, if wine lasts in your system for, for three months, you know, we'd have a big problem, right? So, so that's just something I'd like to throw out there, just, that's my official stance on, on that, but at the same time, it's just unfortunate, I wouldn't want someone high while operating machinery, but there's no way to prove when they were high, right?
Well, we, we can still do drug testing for everything but marijuana.
Yeah.
Uh, and then, why, why don't we get legal opinion on this?
Yeah.
Because that's a real tricky problem.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think maybe it makes sense to, at least the initial drug test when you hire, that kind of, I kind of like that, just to show is that you're willing to, to, to jump over that hurdle. Right, if you can't stop smoking weed for a couple of weeks or months, then maybe you're not the kind of employee we want.
But your first point with marijuana, it's still staying.
Yeah. It's still, yeah, exactly, it's still, it's illegal, it's illegal, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, 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 that's my overall.
I, I think we should get, ask, ask counsel on that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the other side of the sort, the other side of that is, you know, if something happens, well, if someone's high while operating heavy machinery, someone gets hurt, you know?
Yeah, and I, I wonder how that falls with the people who, uh, you know, the C D L, you know?
Yeah.
Like he, she was saying that, he was, he was saying that because they had their C D L that they were already triggered to build a, a random drug testing, right, or alcohol testing? But does that test include marijuana?
I have no idea, I'll ask.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and, and trust me, I don't, I don't expect you to answer that, it was a kind of an open-ended question, I don't want you, could put you on the line to answer that, but.
But do we need a motion to postpone this until we get more information?
I don't know, just have to table.
The only pending thing that would be time-sensitive is that we do have a new employee that we, um.
A pre-employment, a pre-employment.
Pre-employment, we can do what we want to, so we could say that this particular employee that will start, you can, he's on your agenda to point on the nineteenth, um, but we could.
Could ask him to do.
Ask him to do that, we just gotta figure out how you get that done.
Okay.
Nice.
And then you can appoint him on the nineteenth, and they'll start on the fifth sixth, so.
Okay, um, next item, board of commissioners.
Yeah, I think we don't have anything discussed there today.
Okay, oh, right, okay, alright, so that's just here, that agenda.
Alright, so now I think we go back up to, Jen, item thirteen.
Alright, do you have enough of your people here?
We have a quorum, uh, call the meeting to order, but.
You're ready.
Uh, it is five minutes before the.
Okay, I'll just wait.
We can wait, we could just edit one needs the restroom, or maybe now's the time.
Yeah, I'll just wait.
Did it hit people?
No.
I can always go.
I'm bad.
Let me down. Okay. How'd you get Bob here?
Threats.
Huh?
Threats.
Threats?
Yeah.
Looking good, Bob.
Huh?
Are you looking good?
Yeah.
Feeling good?
Last test was, uh, very positive.
Oh, great.
Real positive, so.
Yeah.
I'll take it as a win so far. Yeah.
Yeah. What, what is that on your head?
Huh?
Ocean Reliance, what is that?
I can't.
What, what is that?
Ocean Reliant, it's a tugboat from Boston.
Oh.
Friend of mine, friend of mine used to work for Boston Fuel, and they used to give him, then he retired and I was really upset, I said, again, where am I gonna make my clothes? Jesus, you know? Sweatshirts, and you can't imagine the stuff that he has to give us, incredible, and I mean, like, first wallet.
Really?
Really, like twenty-two ounce sweatshirts, and you can't even find them, they, giving them out like candy. Plus, they all say Ocean Reliant on it, so.
That's okay.
Yeah, I don't care.
Hello, Kim. Look like you're going to a party.
Isn't this the party?
Is that the one we did mention last time?
Oh, that's one, that's one, okay, okay.
It's a long one, I've been here since two thirty.
Really?
All the money you're getting paid to do this.
I know, how factifying.
Hey, I figured it out, it's twenty-five cents an ounce. What if the agenda for transfer, whatever that. This is it, what?
It's just that one.
Yeah. Three transfers, four transfers.
So you actually had it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, okay.
What do I blame it on? I blame it on multiple processes, that's what I say.
Does this seem to affect you at all, actually, doesn't it?
I do pretty well, no, I wa- I wasn't for a while, but I.
Good medication, or did you just get better, or?
No, I took the, the strongest medication they could give me.
Really?
Yeah, and then that ended up failing, so now I'm on a different medication, but not, um, what it seems to be working well, so. Yeah, definitely not perfect, but I'm.
I think so.
You can tell, I mean, obviously, right?
Yeah.
Well, that's you a different way, actually.
I was gonna get coffee.
Yeah, but it's not. I do a lot of. I do okay.
Probably not worth it.
That's why I was surprised when you told me, I know a few people that have, you know, usually it's, you can tell.
Yeah, I, Mike.
Yeah.
They say it's not right, it's not, but.
Yeah, just, we probably five thirty, just two to five thirty.
And it's usually, it's like seventy-five percent.
Depends on which one you look at.
Yeah. Yeah, this one.
Okay, so it's five thirty, and I'll call the Finance Committee meeting of July thirteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one to order, oh, and I forgot I was gonna be recording, so I could make the minutes.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be, well, recording anyway, so.
Oh, that'll be, that'll be on YouTube.
Yeah.
Great, um, okay, so present are Bob, Kent, Margaret and Gary, absent are Emily Anne, Katie and Christine. Uh, the first agenda item is approval of minutes, which I didn't prepare, so that we can skip, um, and then for transfer requests, uh, we have one left over that we didn't act on in our past, our previous meeting, so we should probably do that first. Uh, that's the request for four hundred and two dollars and ninety-one cents, um, for overtime for Tim McIntosh from, I think it was from November. Um, it's, uh, that's coming out of the, um, uh, is that the professional and technical consulting line that's going up to the, um, uh, what is it, overtime wages, is that correct?
I don't have a copy of it in front of me, but.
You don't have it, okay, yeah, it doesn't say on the request, that's why I'm asking.
It doesn't say what account it's coming out of?
Um, no, it's. In fact, I think it even, um, it even has the from and the to reversed, um, it does, yeah, it doesn't say what account, it just says town administrator, department number one twenty-five. Yeah, um, the existing balance in the account it's coming from, I believe, is fifteen thousand.
Okay, that is the professional and technical consulting line.
So that, yeah, yeah, I recognize that, fifteen thousand, um.
Is that the twenty-one budget, or is that the twenty-two?
Twenty, twenty-one.
Okay.
So are there any questions on that?
So there's still, there was still fifteen thousand dollars in that?
In the technical and professional, and that's about to get used, um, four hundred and two dollars and ninety-one cents for overtime wages for Tim, and then there are a couple of upcoming requests that we'll deal with later, um, provided that the selectmen approve them. Um, and those are, um.
So all, are all of those coming out of the same account?
Yes. Yeah, four thousand for, uh, trash, single stream recycling, and.
Vacation.
Um, yeah.
Severance.
Right, four thousand, oh, let's see, what is it, ten thousand, seventy fifty-four dollars and seventy-six cents for vacation at severance for the previous town administrator.
Ah, town administrator, I've had a lot of questions from people, what, what's going on with town administrator.
Yeah, okay, but right now we're dealing with the, uh, the transfer for the overtime for Tim. So can we get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Second, Margaret, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Bob, you abstaining?
I'm abstaining, yeah.
So the vote is three, zero with one abstention. Okay. So I think at this point we turn it over to the selectmen to deal with the ones that they haven't, or, or is there one that, yeah, no, that, that's the only one that's been approved so far, right?
Yep.
I know.
Alright, so yeah, first one we have is the, uh, request for ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, that's, um, for the town administrator, from the. Uh, so transferred from account to account, this is for the severance and the accrued vacation. The vacation, we, uh, since town administrator put his, you know, resigned, we have to pay him out as accrued vacation, and then we did also, uh, vote and agree to give him, uh, some severance as well.
Wh- what was the reason for his resignation?
Uh, he, he claimed personal reasons, but I think, uh, it's not a, shouldn't be a surprise to anybody that what, he wasn't working out, his management style wasn't really a good fit here, so. And we had to make this, you know, his contract was about to kick in on seven one, so, you know, we had some discussions and this was the outcome. Of, you know, if we went past that, it could be a whole, you know, it's a three-year contract, so.
Yeah, actually, I mean, it's unfortunate, it, it's not like this guy was without experience, he had credentials, it's not like he, uh, I'm sure him and his attorney didn't review the contracts, so I don't understand what the, uh, I don't understand what the rub was, to be perfectly honest with you.
The rub, with?
Well, I mean, you know, he resigned for a reason, and it's personal reasons.
Yeah.
Uh, and it has nothing to do with, uh, the way the town is, or how things are set up, or what his job was in town, is that what you're saying?
Um, I'm sure, I think that was a part of his, of the reasons, I mean, I, I think that he just wasn't getting, uh, getting along with people really well in town, to be honest with you.
Well, it's the difference, that's the difference between a town manager and a town, uh, you know, administrator, a manager. Uh, a town manager is in charge of the talent, basically, hires and fires, you know?
Yeah.
He's in charge of everything, so I think that that's the atmosphere he was coming from, if I'm not correct.
He, I, in, in the past, he's had many different titles in, in different parts of government.
Yeah.
So.
So he, we're gonna have another worldwide search for another town administrator, is that correct?
We're gonna disc, I mean, we're gonna figure out what the next steps are, we actually, we discussed this earlier today in executive session, so, um. what our next steps will be and we'll be putting out, you know, a statement to s- what our interim steps will be and then long term. You know, we have to figure that out. I don't wanna jump in rush to make any, you know, decisions on that.
No, no, that's understandable.
Yeah.
But there, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of debris left over and, and one of them, uh, one of my pet peeves is solar panels. Uh, like I expressed before, you know, we paid fourteen million dollars for a home police station. Nobody thought of putting solar panels on. And now they're asking, you know, for a hundred thousand dollars in electricity to run a place where we could have, you know, divested ourselves from that particular problem, other than the fact that you've got probably three and a half million square feet of roofs in town that could all have solar panels on, never mind landfill, which was three town administrators ago. That was supposed to be a done deal and we're gonna get this company in and, and then he retired.
Uh, I think, I think these are all things that, you know, next time around, we'll, we have to be very clear with our expectations and, you know, be able to hold them to that. I think that's one of the kind of downfalls we had in the past was kind of these vague, kind of lofty expectations where, you know, it's hard to really measure someone against that.
No, I, and I understand that. I, that's, that's, that makes a lot of sense. But, you know, maybe it's time that we, uh, we look some other place for, to get the ability to do these things, like a committee, that's set up for solar panels. I mean, I'm sure there's people in town that have ex- expertise that we could tap.
Yeah.
You know, set up a, a commission or whatever. You know, to get something going, I mean, it's just year after year after year after year, you know, and nothing's happening. It's just, it ain't happening.
I think what Bob is saying is something we really should look into, solar panels. I mean, it's a no brainer.
Yeah.
Really. And for the school system, for, for this building, you know, other buildings, uh, I personally, I have solar panels.
Yeah.
I think they're the greatest things in sliced bread, you know?
Yeah, and we've, we've got the, the property to develop the solar panels. I mean, we've got the space, we've got the properties. I mean, there's just, there's no reason. I'm sure there's companies out there that would love to have, you know, uh, an entire community under their care as far as solar panels. It would be good advertising for them, that we've actually, we've accomplished this for an entire community. That's why I say, you know, at some particular point, uh, somebody's gonna pull a trigger. We got, we need to get a committee going. We need to get something going.
It probably has to go on the future agenda, cause it's not on your tonight's agenda.
Yeah, so, so we, that's something we can talk about later on, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to, uh, approve the transfer request for town administrator amount of ten thousand seven hundred and fifty four dollars and seventy six cents.
There are two versions of it that, um, Kim had asked me to prepare. One from the reserve fund. And then the other one is from the professional tech and consulting to the town administrator salary line, so that the.
That makes sense.
So you guys can decide amongst yourselves which would be the better way to go.
Well, I mean, I'm just gonna have to rely on Kim. Where should I take the money from? What do you think is better?
Um, I, I think if the FinCom wanted to have a discussion, if they had a preference as to where they would like to see it come from. They can come from either place, so, um, I don't know if anybody has a particular.
Is it going to be enough in the professional?
How much is it in the reserve?
The reserve fund has thirty six thousand two seventy nine ninety for both the professional.
And the three transfers coming from the professional and technical consulting, what do they add up to?
Um, one is the four oh two and the other one's four thousand, so it would be four thousand four oh two ninety one. So it would still be plenty to take out though.
I don't have any problem coming from the reserve fund, beyond that.
Is it funny, we, we just took four oh two ninety one out?
I mean, it was unestimated.
Yeah.
Sure.
And there's four thousand.
So we're up over eleven, but it's, it's close.
Yeah.
So we'd be short. Forty four.
And the one for the TA is ten thousand.
Ten thousand seven.
Seven fifty four.
You'd be short a couple hundred bucks, based on the fact that you're saying there's fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand currently in there. So we would just, just to make it safe, why don't we just vote from the reserve fund, right?
Oh, no, it's, wait, it's four thousand even and, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, it is, it's, uh, yeah, it's about a hundred and fifty dollars short.
All right.
Um, so maybe we should do it from the reserve fund?
You guys, you guys?
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
It is optimistic, I think it makes sense.
But it doesn't matter. Whatever we don't use goes back to the general fund anyways.
Yeah, all right, all right. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer request from, um, from the reserve fund, uh, for town administrator in the amount of ten thousand seven hundred and fifty four dollars.
Motion made.
Seventy six cents.
Second.
Seventy six cents.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Okay, so I want to take a similar motion to.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so it's Bob. Second.
I'll second.
Margaret. All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Four to zero.
All right. Ready to move on here? So the next one, gen, item fifteen, is discussion of vote on a transfer request from planning additional gross overtime to PFT salary and wages in the amount of one thousand dollars.
Motion made.
All right, um, just discussion real quick. What is this? Do, 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 do you know what this one is?
Alan knows what's on the paper, so.
It's just one, I, I guess one thing. Kim, please.
Um, the planning technician, um, often has to, um, do night meetings. So if that, um, is, that has been the situation and that person has been paid out the time for those meetings as opposed to banking them as a flex time and then taking additional time off. Um, so the budget, um, wasn't funded enough for, um, payment of all of that time. So there's currently a deficit, um, of three oh eight seventy. Um, but at the time the request was submitted, um, there was just sort of a cushion put in there of the thou- of, of, you know, using a thousand dollars. Um, so the request could go down to three oh eight seventy, cause that is the actual deficit. But.
But put a thousand just to be kind of, so we don't have to do this again?
Well, no, we're all done. There's not gonna be any more payroll, so.
Okay.
But again, this, this request was submitted on the seventeenth and we hadn't finalized payroll at that point. Um, so there's no issue doing the thousand, but at a minimum, um, the request would need to be the three oh eight seventy. Um, and there is one thousand five hundred and twelve dollars set aside as overtime, um, that was not used during media.
Okay, so yeah. All right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, actually, I'm confused now. Is the, uh, the overtime that was set aside, is that what we're using for the, for the thousand dollars? Is it gonna be in, uh, department for transfer?
It is a departmental transfer out of overtime and into, um, regular personnel.
Okay, but the overtime is the one that had fifteen?
Correct.
Okay.
There was just no use of overtime.
Oh, yeah, all right, okay, it's.
All right, so I think we had, motion's been seconded, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 And that's at the thousand, not the three oh eight?
Yeah, it's, it doesn't, yeah.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to transfer a thousand from planning additional gross overtime to planning PFT salary and wages.
I'll make a motion.
I've heard a lot of them.
That was pretty, pretty sick.
Okay, who's the second?
I'll second.
Margaret, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four to zero.
All right, moving on. So next we have, uh, the transfer request from police personnel salary wages to police overtime in the amount of twenty six thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and sixty five cents. So this is, there's a deficit here in segment thirty one, it looks like, twenty six thousand seven hundred, well, that's the amount.
Did they give a reason for the overtime?
Uh, there's something in, uh, if you want to, I, make it, see if I can find it real quick for you.
That has to do with this.
Yeah, is there a reason on that?
Uh, there's not.
Kim, Kim does the reason?
She always.
In talking to the chief, um, a lot of, um, officers take, uh, I don't know, during the month of June, so in order to fill those shifts, um, yes, have other officers cover and therefore, um, ended up with more overtime in order to cover those.
Is, is, is that not incorporated into their budget? Don't they have a line item for overtime, correct?
Uh, they do.
Okay, I, I'm just curious, is it, is this a yearly thing that happens like every June? Or if it does, then should it be incorporated into the budget somewhere?
It's hard to know when people are going to take their vacation, um, it just, you know.
No, I'm just, I'm just curious. If you've got, you know, so many offices and they're all entitled to four weeks vacation, well, I don't know.
They also have the option to buy back vacations, so again, that's really, I don't know.
Yeah, so I, you know, I'm just wondering if all of that is incorporated into their budget. You know, going forward, how you would calculate that and, uh, if it wasn't incorporated in there, what would be the excess? Unless it was overtime for fires or, you know, media hits or whatever.
Well, it's still coming out of the police.
It's still in, it's into, into the.
Yeah.
It's added the regular salary into their overtime salary.
Yeah.
But it's not a, yeah.
But my, 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 my question is about the, uh, how the budget's constructed. You know, if, it should be, should be able to figure this out if everybody's entitled to, say, four weeks vacation. Figure four weeks vacation for every officer and then you have to come up with a number. And then with this excess, I can, I can understand that, but it, 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 it depends what the excess is, that's why my question is, what is it for?
Yeah, it, it could be the whole thing that, that you have, I was talking about with the, the new, um, police laws and, and not being able to utilize part time hours and.
Yeah, uh, I'm sure that, I'm sure that has, that has an effect because, which I think is just silly, but.
Move on?
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, transfer request from police personnel salary wages to police overtime in the amount of two, twenty six thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and sixty five cents.
Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to transfer twenty six thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and sixty five cents from police, uh, permanent full time salary and wages to police overtime.
Make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Arms. Four to zero approved.
All right, now we have a transfer request from assessors to revaluation in the amount of sixty three hundred dollars. Kim? You know this one?
Oh, um, sure. Um, uh, at the time that the twenty one budget was done, um, the finalized contract was not, the final amount of the contract for the services was, um, wasn't known, so it's actually a little bit short um, of what the contract came in at. So there is extra funding within the regular expense budget for the assessors. Um, so they're asking to move it to the revow, um, budget in order to satisfy that contract.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request from the assessors to revaluation, uh, in the amount of sixty three hundred dollars.
Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of sixty three hundred dollars from the assessors to revaluation.
I'm not sure.
Second.
Margaret. Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approved, four to zero.
All right, moving on, so, uh, transfer request from town administration, uh, professional and tech consulting to trash, single stream recycling fees in the amount of four thousand dollars and just for the acceptance fees at Crepo Hill for the last bill fiscal year twenty twenty one. This is pretty straightforward, so I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve that transfer request.
Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of four thousand dollars from town administrator.
Actually, I've, I've got a question here.
Uh.
Okay, it, it, this, this money is the last bill from a contract?
Well, what it says here, uh, the acceptance fee at Crepo Hill for last bill.
It's done on tonnage.
Say again?
It's done on tonnage when they drop off it.
Well, I know, I know it's done on tonnage, but my, that's not my question. My question is, is that part of the contract you, I mean, whether we have a contract with at that point.
Crepo, it's so, it's, we still have Crepo for another year.
Oh, okay.
One, one more year, like, like, we, we switched, you know, the company that's gonna bring it to Crepo, or we're still going Crepo.
Okay, so it, it, I, again, my question is, the amount of tonnage, we're responsible for X number of tons per week. Okay, as far as the contract is concerned. If we go over that, is there an additional charge?
Kim is shaking her head.
The contract is based on the price per ton. There's sort of amount of tonnage as part of the contract.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's.
I know that we were at, at one point, you know, responsible to provide them with, I, I think it was just a while, about fifteen tons a week or something.
That might have been at C Mass.
And if we didn't supply with that, there was a, there was a penalty.
Uh, probably with it when we were at C Mass.
Right.
Right, cause that's like, there, that's a waste of energy. They need, they need the waste coming in.
Right, right.
I don't know. All right.
Okay, so a motion brought up. All right, okay, so Kent makes.
One second.
Bob seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So it's Kerry's four to zero.
All right.
We need to do number thirteen?
Thirteen? I missed thirteen?
Yeah. Sorry.
Lucky number thirteen.
All right, so this one is, uh, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer request for the transfer station for uniform allowances to additional gross overtime in the amount of one hundred and sixty three dollars and four cents.
Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of one hundred and sixty three dollars and four cents.
I'll make the motion.
From, I think, Bob. Ken seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Kerry's four to nothing. Then we have the one from the town clerk.
We already approved it. We have the signed copy.
Oh, oh, you did? Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, I see it. It's signed, okay. Right, so, uh, so we have a request to transfer a thousand dollars from elections postage town clerk travel, um, to cover training for Cheryl. Do we have questions on that?
Is, is, is it, there's something in the, in the budget for that?
Um.
Isn't it, I, my question, is it just covered by something in the budget?
No. Um, maybe, Kim, could you give your explanation on that or?
Um, sure, um, so the, um, the training that was going to be held during November was canceled, uh, due to the COVID pandemic. Um, so at the time that the twenty one budget was done, um, Jackie did not put that in the budget. Um, but Cheryl was eligible to attend the training, um, and the training is required in order for, um, uh, the town, for the, the certification process for the town clerk. Um, so because many organizations were impacted by COVID, um, where trainings had been canceled or postponed, um, the DOR, um, is, um, recommending that departments encumber money from twenty one into twenty two to cover those costs, so that there isn't an undue financial burden in twenty two, because there may be more trainings that have to happen. Um, so the idea is that there is funding within the, um, elections budget that is not being, um, expended at this point. Um, so the request was to transfer money from the elections to the regular town clerk budget, um, so that ultimately that money could be encumbered, um, for this training that was unable to be held.
So the budget, so the numbers for the twenty two budget, not the twenty one?
It would have taken place.
It would have taken place in twenty-one, had there not been the pandemic.
You, you're moving to, that money is, is being moved, moved forward to twenty-two budget?
That's what an encumbrance would do.
Okay.
This is just the approval of the transfer from one to another.
Yep, yep.
Make the motion, Garrett, okay, Kent makes motion to transfer a thousand from elections postage to town clerk travel. So second, Margaret, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and let's prove unanimously, and I believe that's it, all right?
All right, that's it for us too, right?
Correct.
So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.